I'm your chairman, Orlando Ramos. We're also joined by, let's see, Counselor Hurst, who is a member of this committee. And we're also joined by Counselor Letterman, as well as, I thought I saw another counselor. But it looks like that's it for counselors, and we might get more people joining us as well. I'd like to start off by doing introductions, so I'm gonna go by the names that are on the call, so we'll start with Sergeant Pelcher.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Sergeant Pelcher. I am in charge of the ordinance unit and the K-9 unit for the Springfield Police Department.
Thank you. Bob Bolduc?
Uh, here.
Thanks for joining us, Bob. Do you want to just tell us who you are, who you're representing?
Oh, sure. I'm representing Pride Stores.
Thank you. As I see, it looks like the other, it looks like the other attendees are members of the media. Is that correct, or is there anyone else that would like to introduce themselves? I've seen none. So, there's one item on the agenda was just continued discussion around the gas station ordinance, the dirt bikes last gas station ordinance. I am the lead sponsor of that ordinance, which is modeled after an ordinance that is on the books on several municipalities across the state of Connecticut, including New Haven, Bridgeport, and Hartford, as well as other cities and towns such as Philadelphia and Baltimore. As we know, this was proposed in response to the national issue around dirt bikes in urban areas and, you know, large to mid-sized cities, and the danger that they propose to the public. It is my intent to do whatever we can as a legislative body to help reduce the issue of, you know, reduce the amount of bikes out on the road, and collaborate with the Springfield Police Department in coming up with legislation that would help make it as difficult as possible for these illegal dirt bikers to operate. And so, this ordinance has passed first step, and we are, there were some concerns at the last meeting before we passed final step that we hadn't heard from gas station owners, although they were notified, that we haven't had an opportunity to have this discussion in committee. So, we wanted to extend that opportunity and make sure that we got all the invitations out to all our gases, gas station owners across the city. And so, I was, I did work together with, with the administrative staff to make sure that every gas station owner in the city got notification of this meeting, as well as the link to the meeting. And, and here we are. And so I wanted to turn it over to Sergeant Pelcher if you have anything else to add, and then we'll take questions from the, from the council. You're on mute, sir.
I apologize. Did we get any feedback? I believe it was New Haven, as far as any of the things that were asked of them to get back to us about regarding, I think, their success or incidences of problems or anything?
Yeah, so I, I reached out to them once again before the last meeting, and I was told that they, they have not reported any incidents related to this ordinance. I also reached out to Hartford, which also reported that they haven't, they haven't had any incidents related to this ordinance.
Okay, and I believe there was some talk about raising the fine structures and stuff like that. Is there been any progress with that?
Yeah, we talked about that. I'm not, I'm not really in favor of raising the fine structure. I think this, it's, you know, I'm okay with the, with the hundred dollars per incident. You know, that's something that we can address at a later day or address at the, you know, before the full council, if other counselors want to entertain that. I'm okay with leaving it as is with the hundred dollar fine.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Bob, I know you wanted an opportunity to, to address some of your concerns, and so I'll give you the floor, and, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
All right, so, the first is, I have to tell you, I spoke to a lot of people in the last couple of weeks about what they thought. And you don't want to hear what, what everybody, everybody said. I mean, it's not repeatable, okay, in terms of this idea. So we won't go there anymore, but you can imagine. So here's the thing. If the police can't enforce it, and no offense, Sergeant, but if you're not enforcing a three hundred, ticketing them three hundred dollars now, how can you expect some of our young cashiers, both male and female, to do this? When they may know the kids, the bikers, they may certainly go back to the same neighborhood at nighttime as these bikers. How can you expect them to go out and do that? I mean, it's just not reasonable. You know, they're not wearing a badge. My guys, my ladies and, and gents are not wearing a badge. Why can't the police do it? Again, Sergeant, no offense, but let's say it like it is. I'd like an answer to that.
So, um, so I think, so you're referring to the fine, and so the, under the ordinance, the way that it's written, the police department will be the enforcement authority. So the, the police department will be the ones who will investigate and issue fines in the event that they're
No, 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 you're missing, you're, you're missing the point.
I'm sorry, Bob. Bob, if you don't mind, let me, let me answer your question first, and then, and then we can go back to you. And, and so, so the police department will be the enforcement authority. And in terms of the clerk's responsibility will be no different than the, the sale of alcohol and/or the sale of tobacco, which would be to decline a transaction. I would argue, and other municipalities have argued, that this may be an even easier deny, denial of a transaction because it's done remotely. You know, the, if someone swipes a credit card in order to get gasoline, then the clerk would have the option of either approving or denying. And under the ordinance, they would be required to deny the, the transaction if that person is on a dirt bike. In the event that they play, pay cash, then again, you know, they can point to the signage that will have to, that under the ordinance would have to be displayed, and then the clerk would have to, again, just deny the transaction. Does that answer your question?
No, absolutely not. The first thing is, you don't understand. When our cashier denies a pump like that, the motorist, for whatever it is, and it happens now, whether it's cigarettes or alcohol or whatever, some of them get violent. Okay, so these, these young boys are gonna come in, they're gonna be really upset, and they're gonna say, why didn't you turn on the pump? Okay? Now, I remind you of what happened in the X just last week. I cannot imagine how you would, how you would know about that and say, oh, it's okay, these guys, these, you know, they won't get violent against our cashiers. Oh, no, not at all. Well, you know what happened at the X, okay? And as for when you say, who's gonna enforce it, when I don't, you don't, you missed my point entirely. I'm not worried about who's gonna enforce it against my cashiers. I'm worried about, I'm asking the question, which I haven't had an answer for yet, and that is, why didn't, why isn't the police department enforcing the three hundred dollar fine against the drivers of the bikes in the first place? If they can't do it, how in, if they can't do it, how in hell do you expect an eighteen-year-old young girl to do it? That's absurd that you would expect that. Especially when this young girl has to go back to the same neighborhood at night that these guys live in, and they know where she lives, or they may know her brother, or her brother may be a friend of theirs, or something like that. It's absurd that you would get the police, tell the police, oh, you don't have to do your job, we're gonna have cashiers do it instead. And I don't care what you say about other cities and towns. I'm frankly not sure I believe it. But if they got away with it, they can't let, that doesn't mean it's a good idea. And there's more when you're ready. But first, I'd like some answer to that, because I, so far, Sergeant hasn't asked me why he and his people aren't enforcing the law in the first place. And incidentally, it's a law that you wrote, Counselor Ramos.
Okay, so, what was, what is your specific question?
Why isn't the police enforcing it in the first place?
Okay, well, so the, the ordinance that was
Why don't you, no, 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 why don't you let him answer, let him answer that. I've asked the question twice now. Why isn't the police department doing it?
Bob, one second, please. Your question is directed to Sergeant Pelcher, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for making that clear. Sergeant Pelcher, do you have an answer?
Which three hundred dollar fine is he referring to? The one that's both in the ordinance change?
I believe Bob is referring to the ordinance that was passed by the City Council last year, which, which established fines, municipal fines for the illegal operation of dirt bikes.
Okay, well, we're frustrated as a department, as a city. We're doing our best. When we're catching them, we're not only giving them fines, we're arresting people, we're confiscating bikes, and it can best be summed up that we're doing the best we can.
Well, then, so you, in other words, you're doing the best you can. You can't do any better, so now you're gonna expect the cashier to, to pick up and do it for you. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, Bob, was that, is that a question for?
Yes.
Is that a question to myself?
Yes.
No, I, I don't expect the cashiers to chase people in, in car chases, or ATV chases, or motorcycle chases, stuff like that. That's what we do. This ordinance is designed to cut them off at the pumps. That's one extra tool in our tool belt to combat this problem.
Well, you're asking the wrong person to do it, because some eighteen-year-old young lady, it's not, it's not fair to expect her to do it, especially when she has to go back to the same neighborhood at night and worry about getting beat up with a club. If they can beat up somebody at the X in broad daylight with clubs, what the hell are they gonna do to my cashiers when they go home to the same neighborhood?
Okay, Bob, we have, we have some, did you have another question, or did you? Because we have, we have other questions from, from counselors as well.
I want to make some more comments. I am amazed that the fire department is not here, really upset also, because you know what they're gonna do on this one? It's really simple. They come down to us and they get a can, and they say, I'm filling up my lawnmower, and they bring the can back and they put it on their back porch. When they need fuel, they take it off there, and they pour it onto their, into their bike, and if it happens to be a hot engine and they spill, they gotta fire. Okay, and now you're gonna have gas stored on back porches all over the place for fuel. You haven't solved the problem at all. You're creating another one. The fire department obviously doesn't know about this, because you know darn well, they'd be saying, this is ridiculous that you would propose such a thing, because they're gonna get around this really easy and create a much bigger problem.
All right, it looks like we have a question from Counselor Hurst.
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Just, just wanted to make a quick comment in response to, to Mr. Bolduc's point. I, I, I do think that the crux of this ordinance is to try to assist the police in their, in the efforts that they already are attempting to do. Maybe, maybe not to the liking of some, but I, I certainly think they're, they're doing is, you know, they're doing a fairly decent job in terms of trying to get these individuals off the street. But, but also to reiterate Bob's point, and was always, it's, it's always been my concern, is the enforcement piece from the actual tellers. And I think the difference here, as opposed to when you're attempting to enforce it versus individuals trying to buy cigarettes, for a long time, they were trying to enforce it with people, the people who are going to buy the cigarettes were under the age of, what was it, eighteen? And so it's a lot different for a clerk to try to enforce a law, state law, against minors, as opposed to them trying to, you know, and, or trying to enforce a municipal law against folks that very well may not be minors. And I've seen a number of individuals who are not minors on these dirt bikes, or certainly didn't look like minors to me. And so that, that would be my biggest fear. And so I'll just reiterate what I've always said. I don't know how you combat that, but considering what occurred at the X, I think Bob's point is very valid, and you know, I just think we need to find a way to, to, to attempt to get around that, or to resolve that. You know, or else it's difficult for, for someone like myself to support this. So I don't know what that answer is, but I definitely think it has to be addressed.
Thank you, Counselor. So, so I'll just give some thoughts. So first of all, I, I think that the, the incident at the, at the X should highlight exactly why we need to pass this ordinance, because we have to do everything that we can in order to get these illegal dirt bikers off the road, and to make it as difficult as possible for them to be on our roads and to operate, right? So, so that's number one. I think if anything, that should give us an even more of an urgency to pass this ordinance. Secondly, is from the very beginning, I think we've all expressed concern over, you know, what a, what it would look like for a clerk to deny the transaction. And I have compared it to the sale of alcohol, compared it to the sale of tobacco. Your point, Counselor, is well taken, but I will say that, and Sergeant Pelcher can, can respond as well. That's why we have laws on the books. That's why we have police officers, because if there is an event that a, a person is getting violent with someone with, for whatever reason, call the police. I mean, that's, that's what the police are there for, right? So, so, so obviously that, the, the other thing is, one of the, one of the things that I've considered since the past, since the last meeting, is the possibility, I think that there should be some mechanism for for a, an appeal in the event that a, you know, a, a gas station owner is found to have violated the ordinance. There is a one hundred dollar fine associated with that, but there is no appeal process in, in the ordinance. And so that's something that I would consider adding to the ordinance. And, and that's where the, you know, the owner would, would decide whether or not they would, they would want to appeal the one hundred dollar fine, and that, that, that fine can be appealed to the, to the police commissioner. And then from there, you know, if there is an incident where, you know, that's where the, the owner would, would be able to, to make their case as to why the sale was made. So I don't know if that answers your question, Counselor, or your concern. But, or I don't know if you have any, any other ideas as to, you know, what we can do to make it better or stronger. I'm open to ideas, and so if you have any other ideas, I'd be happy to take them into consideration.
I would like to add something.
One second, Mr. Bolduc. Counselor Hurst, did that answer your?
No, I mean, it certainly answered it, but I mean, it's, 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 I mean, it answered it to, you know, to a certain degree. I, I think in the moment, you know, when it, it, it's very difficult for a teller, you know, to be, to ask a teller to say, hurry up and call the police with these individuals who might get violent. I think it can happen in a matter of, in a matter of seconds. And so I just, you know, I just think it puts the tellers in a very bad situation to tell these folks no. And so I don't know how you get around it. I don't have the solution as of yet. I certainly will, will think about it, but I, I just don't think it's fair to put the tellers in that position.
And I appreciate that, and we have, we'll go to, we'll go to Mr. Bolduc next, but just, just for, just to remind everyone, I mean, this is what we talked about at our first meeting. And it was mentioned at the first meeting that, look, these, these, we're, we're not gonna do nothing, just because we're, you know, we're not gonna be afraid of these guys and say, we're not gonna do anything because we're afraid that they're gonna hurt someone. That's exactly why we should do something, to get them out the streets, right? So, you know, we're not, we're not gonna do, they're not gonna intimidate us into doing nothing. Sergeant Pelcher, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
I would like to add two things. The first is, I'm floored when you say, you're not gonna be afraid. You're not there with my cashier at ten o'clock at night when they have to refuse some guys, okay? It's my cashier who has the, is the one who's gotta be afraid, not you. You're nowhere to be found. And now let's talk about, you say, call the police. If I told you the response time on police when we have to call for serious problems, you would never suggest that we call the police when there's a person in danger. Because the act, they will be, all the damage will be long gone before the police show up. Now, I like the police, and I know they work hard, but I gotta tell you, if you ever, if you want me to start clocking response times and go public with that, there's gonna be a lot of embarrassed police and, and a lot of embarrassed blue uniforms out, because the response time is terrible.
Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you. I'm sorry I was late. I'm a little under the weather, but I definitely wanted to be here because I believe I was the one who had brought up the safety of the cashiers in the very first meeting that we had. And, and I agree with you, we need to do something. I just don't know if, if punishing the owners of gas stations, because it feels like a punishment to me, although it's probably not presented that way, the owners of gas stations for, for dirt bike or illegal dirt bike users is the right method. I think that we need to try to come up with something else, because since the beginning, my concern has been for the tellers. I've been in there when they have refused somebody some cigarettes or, like, a cigar, and they refuse to serve them, and how violent folks can get just for something as small as that. And if these guys or girls are riding these bikes illegally from the beginning, that's, they, they obviously don't care about the safety of the folks on the road. They don't care about the safety for themselves, so I doubt if they'll care about the safety of the cashiers, the people that are patron, the establishment, or anybody else inside. And I would hate for something negative to happen because of this ordinance, and they fall back on the council. And so it, it's difficult for me to support putting anybody's safety in jeopardy. And as for the police officers, we're already trying to look for creative ways to reduce some of the work that's already on them as far as like mental health, going to mental health calls, going to other calls that maybe they're not really necessary, but because they're the ones who call, they have to answer and they have to respond, and that plays a lot into their response time right now, and this will be added one more thing. So, I don't know that I can support this just because, mainly because of safety issues for the folks that work in the establishment and people that might be in there, you know, buying items.
I'd like to add one other thing that I want to
One second, one, one second, Bob. Counselor Whitfield, do you have any suggestions as to how we can improve the ordinance?
I, I don't, I, because from the beginning, this has always been my feeling. I think I'm the first person that brought it up from the beginning. It has always been my concern that it feels like a punishment to the establishment owner for something that the illegal dirt bike users are doing. And I know it's similar to alcohol, and it's similar to cigarettes, but that more was like for their health and because of the age requirement, not because they're out on the street intentionally hurting people. I mean, you even got older people buying cigarettes, and and these have a paraphernalia for younger people that they shouldn't be doing that. So, honestly, that, I had never heard of anything like this, but I don't have a solution for you right now. I wish I did, but I can always do some research and then come back to the table, but right now I don't have anything.
Okay. Counselor Letterman?
Counselor Letterman? Uh, thank you, Mr. Efforts. And I have to say, I, I think that the ordinance is well-intentioned, certainly. And I think it is one that deserved debate that we have had. I guess I have to say that I share the concern that Counselor Hurst and Counselor Whitfield have brought up in terms of the safety or the implications for the cashiers and the clerks. And I know you and I have discussed that, I think, as far as, you know, improvements to the ordinance, I think it kind of, you know, it, it's a fairly simple proposition, so it sort of rests on, you know, how do, how do we ultimately arrive at a, a, a ruling around that concern? You know, we, I was encouraged to hear that in the other communities that had implemented this, there weren't any, you know, on the record reports of this type of, of activity. Although, you know, from the beginning, when this began to be debated, we said we really wanted to hear from folks who would be sort of impacted by it in the sense of needing to be involved in the enforcement. So, you know, I'm concerned to hear that Mr. Bolduc's employees feel that this would be a challenge for them, and, and I think that we have to consider that before we take our final vote. I do have a question for Mr. Bolduc and a question for Sergeant Pelcher, if we have time. For, for Mr. Bolduc, I'm just wondering if you could talk to us about the logistical way in, in which these purchases actually take place. For example, you know, if, if I purchase, if I go to a pump and put my card in, it said, and, and for some reason, it's declined for one reason or another, it actually says, please see cashier. Is that, is that what would occur in this situation?
Yeah, because we wouldn't, either that, it, yes, but even if it didn't say that, when the pump doesn't work, the customer always comes in breathing fire. Okay, in other words, I'm there, why isn't that pump working for me? Okay, now, certainly all these drivers will know very soon about the law, and they will know that it's the cashier who turned the pump off on them. And they will come in saying, turn on that blankety-blank pump. You know they will. Okay? So, you know, I'd love to have any one of you come with me some, let's say the law were to pass. I would love to have any one of you come with us someday when we have to go out and tell all these cashiers that they now can't do that. And you see, listen to what they tell you about their safety. Okay, and I'm glad that those of you counselors who've brought it up and thinking about our safety are mentioning that, because that is clearly what I'm calling about. I'm not worried about the hundred dollar fine. I'm worried about the safety of our people and the lawsuits that will ensue, because we made them act as enforcers of the law without giving them a badge.
I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Bolduc, and, and thank you for clarifying both that kind of logistical area and that experience. And then my question relative to Sergeant Pelcher, and I appreciate your, your presence here. Sir, I think the whole City Council is in favor of giving the police department the tools that they need to combat this. I, you know, I was a co-sponsor with Counselor Ramos of the original legislation to try to, both at the local level, increase the fines, and then at the state level, the home rule petition to bring some more, some more opportunity, or some more options for enforcement against the illegal operation of off-road vehicles. I'm wondering how things are going. Otherwise, I know that there has definitely been a lot more activity in the last couple of months with the department and, and different options or different resources being utilized to try to combat this. I'm wondering if you could just share briefly, you know, your thoughts on how that's been going, and in terms of the, the tools that are currently at your disposal, both, you know, that have existed and that have been encouraged by the City Council previously.
Okay, well, I think I was early on part of some of those early successes with some bike seizures and arrests. As you know, chases of any type of motorized vehicle is a danger to the public, dangerous officers, and all sorts of things could happen. And, you know, with, with the state police coming in with their helicopter, giving us some support from above, with some overtime money, utilizing and getting larger numbers of police officers to, to have these types of dragnet's and, and you know, just the ability to, to coordinate and maybe try to box bikes in. It's, it's not easy. It's a difficult job. We had some successes, and I think we can all agree, or I, I feel that we had a quiet spring. I thought the, the dirt bikers were gonna come out and force. And then now, of course, summer's here, and the rain is here. So, you know, I think Mother Nature's helping us a little bit on this, and coordinating through different agencies has helped us with some early successes, and I think the word got around that, you know, when they're gonna be riding around, they're going to run a high possibility that they're gonna, you know, possibly be caught and prosecuted.
Do we have any, Sergeant, appreciate that. And I'm wondering, do we have any statistics relative to, at least whether it's calls for service, or tickets written, or anything like that to, to indicate how it compares at this time last year? Because I, I will say, certainly it's still an issue, Because I I will say, um, certainly it's still an issue, although I have not noticed it in as intensive a way um as I did last year. I live right on Worthington Street, so certainly it's a major thoroughfare um and and sees its fair share of these vehicles. But I do feel like I've seen a little bit less than I did in 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 last year.
Off the off the top of my head, no, I do not have those statistics. I, you know, I'm sure they could be pulled up.
Okay. All right, well, good. Thank you very much. And and Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for calling the meeting. Bob, thank you for your uh attendance and testimony.
Thank you, councillor. We have a question from councillor Hurst and then councillor Fenton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick one. Um, do we have any data from Hartford and the other city that you uh spoke to regarding the correlation between an ordinance like this and the reduction of um of actual illegal dirt bikes uh on the road? I mean, it would seem to me, I mean, I I I certainly understand the idea that, you know, you can fill up your gas can and fill up your bike uh fairly easily. And so I guess my question is, has this been effective in reducing uh the illegal dirt bikers from being on the road? And those other cities or towns? Do we have that data or information?
We were not able to get any data from New Haven because their ordinance is fairly new. It was um, it was uh uh enacted in uh December, November of last year. Um, and so they haven't had a full year to uh to compile that data. Um, and I have not requested that of any other community councillor to answer your question.
Okay, that would be good to know. I mean, I think we should know whether this is, this has been effective or can be effective in other uh or is being effective in other cities uh before we we vote on it, if we can get that information.
Sure. I know that uh Baltimore has has really shown some improvement in their, I mean, they have it, they have it worse than than anybody. Um, but they um, you know, a combination of like multiple ordinances that they passed, similar to the ones that we passed here, including uh this gas station um ordinance um has contributed to a reduction in the number of uh dirt bikes on the road. Councillor Fenton?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, let me just first say that the dirt bike problem in Springfield is reaching a climax. And we, I think we've heard some stories about some recent violence related to it. But the overall nuisance and danger that individuals that are can participating in this behavior are posing to themselves and other uh motor vehicle drivers has reached a boiling point. And so from my perspective, I start with looking at this from the scope of we have to come up with some solutions to address the problem. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't take into consideration Mr. Bolduc and other uh people in the industry's testimony. But I start from a place of wanting to see anything we can do to restrict or curb this behavior and then making appropriate adjustments to that based on testimony from the industry. So that's where I'm at with it. Um, my question that I have for Mr. Bolduc is is just related generally to the industry. Um, I understand that apparently a lot of angry people at the gas stations these days that are better customers. But I I I understand that this this industry requests and requires that attendants that are serving gas station pumps that are your employees must have other rules that they're required to enforce, which from time to time, I could see that making a customer angry. And I'm wondering what what types of things do your attendants need to enforce uh in terms of access to the pump that are not related to um dirt bike usage? I believe you're on mute, Mr. Bolduc.
There you go.
There are the ones, the legal ones that we have to enforce are the sale of cigarettes and the sale of alcohol. But as was pointed out properly before, those are for kids. We have, we're refusing young, young, people who are younger than they are. And those kids are just trying to get away with it, but once you say, look, you know, when you tell them you have to card them, they turn around and go away because they know that's it. They never get violent. In terms of uh monitoring for gas, what we have to monitor is that it's a a risk, you know, that's a a person there who uh seems to be able to function properly. Uh, if they're stumbling and falling over and they're drunk, obviously, we're not going to do it. But uh there are none where we have, there are none where we have to try and determine if the person, anything else about the person. If they're filling an illegal uh can, like uh this happened uh maybe five years ago when the fire department cracked down on people bringing gasoline home in in plastic containers or glass bottles or uh not using the new approved containers that you would bring gas home for a lawnmower. Um, we had to monitor that and we did. But again, these were homeowners who didn't even know the law and said, oh, thank you. And then they went out and brought the proper container. We have never had to enforce something against uh bad guys in the first place um that frankly, the police can't seem to catch or enforce. And so they want us to do that part of the job for them. This is unheard of, that our cashiers would have to do something like this, where the people can really get violent.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Chair, what what I would, what I would say is I think there are plenty of other examples where cashiers have to uh administer discretion in terms of allowing access to the pump. Um, Mr. Bolduc just highlighted, some of them can't clearly serve somebody who's intoxicated and shouldn't be driving. Uh, you can't let somebody show up with a bunch of plastic milk jugs and fill them up with gasoline or just start dumping gasoline in the back of their uh F-150. Uh, if there was, you know, somebody that was squirting gasoline around um the site and doing it in a way uh that wasn't into a container, uh, that could be a dangerous situation for an attendant. But in that situation, they'd turn it off. Somebody shows up to a pump and they're smoking a cigarette or a pipe, I I sure hope we want to authorize the pump to start. Um, years ago, I I remember there was a restriction against cell phone usage that attendants were uh asked to enforce due to the potential for static electricity. It's since debunked uh at the pump. And um, you know, actually, very recently, I was I was at a gas station and uh I witnessed somebody um put their wallet into the pump to hold open uh the valve to pump their car and they walked away from it. And in that situation, the tenant uh deactivated the pump and did so consistent with the regulation. So I don't, I I I understand that there is a particular sensitivity because of the actions that took place at the X very recently. And I want to be sensitive to teller safety, but I think there already is quite a laundry list of things that we ask them to do. And given the importance of uh supervising this activity in the city and and curbing it and curtailing it, I I think that it's an idea that uh we should continue to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And and uh, thank you for making that point. Actually, I I um, I think I made this point at the last meeting, which is um that we we would be essentially treating by passing this ordinance, we would be essentially treating uh dirt bikes and off-highway vehicles as an illegal container. And so the response will be exactly the same where cashier, if someone comes to the pump with an illegal container, then the action, the required action would be the same as uh an illegal dirt bike. So essentially, illegal dirt bikes, dirt bikes and off-highway vehicles will be treated as an illegal container. So thank you for bringing that up, councillor. Um, in the interest of time, I I do apologize. I have to get to another meeting. I have about three minutes left. Um, do any of the other councillors have any questions? Right, I don't see any of the, any of the questions. So Sergeant Pelcher, anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Bolduc, I want to thank you for joining us. Thank you for uh bringing your concerns. You know, this is exactly why we put this meeting together, because we wanted to hear your concerns and your ideas. Um, if you have any other ideas as to how we can make this ordinance better, or if you have an idea for an alternative ordinance, we'll be happy to entertain that. Councillor Whitfield, would you like the last word?
Yes, please. I just wanted to make one final comment. While we don't really know what the attendants at the gas station have to deal with, this is just adding one more thing. And we could sit here and say, well, it's easy for them because they already enforce X, Y, and Z. But we're not there. We're not in their shoes. A lot of these gas stations are already getting robbed. They already are in danger at nighttime. And just to add one more thing, I don't feel that that is the smartest thing to do just because we already have laws in for um in place that they have to enforce. Um, some of those laws, like putting your wallet to hold the gas pump open, um, isn't as probably serious as trying to stop someone from filling up their illegal dirt bike, especially if they're trying to get somewhere or get home and without this gas, they can't. The wallet wouldn't stop this individual from getting home or getting to wherever they're going, like um not being able to fill up a bike that you're driving. And so I think that they will have different consequences. Um, I think they're different situations and all situations should be looked at individually and not say, just because this is already an enforcement tool, then what's adding one more? Because we don't stand in the shoes or sit in the shoes of attendants and what they have to deal with and put up with currently. And so I still don't necessarily agree with adding another layer layer of danger to them because they already have something in place. And I'm not saying everything that they enforce is dangerous, but I I I believe that this one could be.
Sure. Appreciate your uh, appreciate your feedback, councillor. And um, we'll be in touch with uh with next steps. Um, thanks, everyone, for joining us. Good night.